Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 1st meeting of the Quincy City Council Environmental and Public Health Committee and call it to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counsel Dabona. Counsel Yang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy. Chairman Harris.
Yeah.
You have a quorum.
You have a quorum. Very good. First off, matters before the council. First, I should do the open meeting. Exactly. Open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. And with that, I also would like to thank QATV, who has -- is televising this this evening. Normally, they don't do all of the committee meetings, but this one has such a large impact on several communities: the Native American communities, as well as the communities in Quincy. So, again, I'd like to thank QATV. So with that, I would like to introduce that this is where on 2019-045, Resolution Seeking Testimony from Native American Organizations Regarding Preservation of Indian Burial Ground on Long Island. So with that, I would like to introduce and invite to speak Gary McCann, Policy Consultant of the MICDI Policy Intertribal Committee on Deer Island. And please, always good to see you, Gary.
Yes, nice to see you, Chairman. So we're going to start out, we have a number of speakers, and we're going to start out with Chairman Ken White from the Chibana Gungamook Nipmuck Tribe, and he'll be our first speaker, followed by a number of other speakers.
Excellent.
If that's okay.
Oh, that'd be wonderful, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if you could just come up and say your name, and speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you, that'd be great.
Thank you. Not used to being on TV. My name is Ken White. I'm chairman of the Nipmuck Indian Council of Chibana Gungamook. We're from the Webster-Dudley area of Massachusetts, and we're one of the state-acknowledged Nipmuck tribes of Massachusetts. I want to thank Quincy Mayor Karch, I hope I pronounced that right.
Of course.
And the Quincy City Council, and NACOB, of course, for the invitation to give testimony at this hearing. I want to make it very clear that the Nipmuck Indian Council of Chibana Gungamook neither supports or opposes the proposed bridge construction to Long Island. Our concerns are with the possible construction of facilities on Long Island that would require extensive excavation that could result in the desecration of unmarked Native American burials. Our tribe has long been an advocate of the protection of Native American burials. History tells us that during King Philip's War, Native Americans from internment areas within the mainland, praying Indians, were forcibly removed to Deer Island with nothing but the clothing that they were wearing. These poor souls were subject to deplorable conditions at these concentration camps, where many died of sickness, little food, and were buried on the island. Many more were sold as slaves, while hundreds were moved to nearby Long Island where there may be unmarked burial sites there as well. These concentration camps was an attempted systematic genocide of a human race. If indeed there is future construction and extirpations on Long Island, the Chibana Gungamook Indian Council supports a full archaeological survey be conducted to detect unmarked burials that may be associated with the Long Island concentration camps. Our ancestors' right to die with dignity was inhumanely taken from them. This survey is the honorable thing to do, and not to preserve their final resting place or be reinterred with honor and dignity that they so rightfully deserve. Boston has come a long way in cleaning up the waters of Boston Harbor and the islands. However, the city of Boston has failed to recognize the dark history of these islands. A better education is key to the early history of Boston and the Harbor Islands, and should be taught at the elementary level in all Massachusetts U.S. history courses. But very little is known of the inhumane treatment of Native Americans in the colonial era of Massachusetts Bay. Nukidi Tukum, I have spoken. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. And good evening to the esteemed representatives of the city of Quincy, Massachusetts office of the council. My name is Wanamawal Tom Frederick. I am the second chief of the Chappaquiddick Tribe of Massachusetts Wampanoag Nation and board director of North American Indian Center of Boston. I've been invited to speak today and give testimony on behalf of the joint collaborations of the Maheganoke Intertribal Committee on Deer Island and the former established Boston Indian Council now referred to as North American Indian Council, or NACOB. As you all are well aware, Long Island and Boston Harbor is the site of a horrendous event, as it was used as a concentration camp for the Indians in 1676 during the King Philip's Wars. My people, my tribe, have a special vested interest as to the importance of these actions. Simply put, these are my ancestors, not just simply bones, but names: Tompom, Tuspaquin, Hayano, Sekonit, Sasamon, and later Freeman, Frederick, Simpson. These are just to name a few. As a direct descendant, I ask you to mitigate these actions with compassion. This is an opportunity to take steps to right a wrong that should have never happened. Will this government continue to heap insult upon injury? And can this government establish humanity by validating the remains of a marginalized and oppressed people? This is not just an opportunity for urban development, but a mandate for justice. As I have mentioned today, these bones have names. I can only think about the sadness and the pain that many of the family members experienced on the island: elderly women, children, forced to experience cold. Today, let there be a voice at a crucial time that seems to celebrate separatism in our nation and in our government. And I ask you to impart the same compassion and grace that was granted to your ancestors as they were laid to rest in well-maintained, manacured, hallowed grounds. I propose the creation of an onsite Native American committee that can oversee the proper care and handling of Indian remains, both from a cultural, spiritual, and ethical vantage. Said committee may operate as an advisor and pride mediation, with an emphasis on cultural sensitivity and others as specified by tribal traditions. Please hear me. The words I speak are not here to pass judgment on anyone, but your actions today will determine if this nation has learned from its past. No, we are not the progenitors of the past, but we are certainly the history makers of the future. What will our legacy be? What will the message we leave for our generations to come? In short, I leave you with these words to assist you in this monumental decision that you must make. The hurt of one is the hurt of us all; yet the honor of one is the honor of us all. In our way, this is what it means to walk in beauty, to walk in peace. In our words, as Nutanian, please remember, we are still here. Thank you very much for your time.
Very much. Is there any questions for -- any questions, folks? No? I thank you for coming. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening. My name is Lauren Sampson. I'm a civil rights attorney at Lawyers for Civil Rights, formerly the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights and Economic Justice. Founded at the behest of President John F. Kennedy and Attorney General Robert F. Kennedy, Lawyers for Civil Rights has spent 50 years engaging in creative, collaborative, and courageous legal advocacy on behalf of immigrants and people of color. From desegregating Boston's public schools to representing sanctuary cities in litigation against the federal government, LCR has responded to the needs of various communities of color in their quest for representation, visibility, and justice. LCR is proud to stand with the MICDI, MNC, Tribal, and First Nations governments in fighting for the preservation of the Deer Island, Long Island, and Boston Harbor Islands historical concentration camp sites and burial ground sites. We have a historical relationship with MICDI. In the 1990s, Ozell Hudson, the former executive director of LCR, represented the MICDI when the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority built a sewage treatment plant on Deer Island without, in violation of federal law, considering the tribe's concerns that the government ignored the burial grounds on the island. These burial grounds were the result of concentration and internment camps that held Native peoples during King Philip's War in the 1600s. Indigenous people who did not consent to be converted in praying towns or assimilated in white settlements were progressively marginalized. Despite this history, at a 1993 meeting with the EPA, our office was shocked to hear an EPA official say that proper sewage was just more important than old Indian burial grounds. Today, nearly 30 years later, the tribal governments are once again fighting for recognition of the genocide of their people. The city of Boston is pushing forward with a development project to construct a new bridge to Long Island and the harbor without sufficient consideration of the history of that island through an extensive environmental impact statement. Of course, the tribes are not opposed to infrastructural improvements or to the addiction treatment planned for that center. But in this day and age, the future does not have to come at the expense of the past. It is possible to appropriately acknowledge sites of memory. Our history is not just statues of colonists and explorers; it is also the pain and trauma they caused to residents of this region. Commemorating the noncombatant elderly women and children who lived and died here during early conflicts with colonists is not polemic; it's simply an acknowledgement of the truth and of our shared responsibility. LCR is pleased that the city of Quincy is seeking a new state environmental impact statement to properly assess the ramifications of the proposed development. We urge the city to partner, and continue to partner, with the MICDI governments in ensuring that all voices can be heard during this process to prevent the erasure of this particular part of our shared history. Thank you.
Have any questions? Thank you very much for testifying. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Before I get started, I'd just like to ask permission from the Native elders to speak. Thank you. Good evening to the council members and the Quincy residents that are here. My name is Danielle DeLuca. I work with an organization called Cultural Survival, which is based in Cambridge, Mass. I'm not a resident of Quincy myself, but I come from a long line of DeLucas who had lived in Quincy for three generations, over on Bunker Hill Lane. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. Cultural Survival is a nonprofit that works to implement the rights of indigenous peoples. I was asked here to testify by Gary McCann. We do not take a particular stance on the bridge, like many others have mentioned, but we are interested in this opportunity for tribal members in the area to be consulted on the issue, since it has impacts for Native communities today. Here in Massachusetts, we are done a disservice in our education system by failing to acknowledge the deep history of policies of genocide that were enacted by the colonial governments here, primarily during King Philip's War, and which have continued for generations. The internment of Native Americans in Boston Harbor Islands is an example of that policy of genocide, and I think the question of development on Long Island provides an opportunity for us to reckon with that history in a public way and to educate our fellow citizens on the rich cultures and histories of local Native American tribes. As the advocacy program manager for Cultural Survival, my role is to work towards implementing the human rights of indigenous peoples, and these human rights, enshrined by the U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, were endorsed by the U.S. government in 2007. And so the U.S. government on the federal, regional, and local levels has an obligation to uphold those rights. So I briefly just want to mention a few specific human rights that I think are relevant here. These are basic human rights that Native communities are due. Article 12 of the U.N. Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples states that "Indigenous peoples have the right to manifest, practice, develop, and teach their spiritual and religious traditions, customs, and ceremonies; the right to maintain, protect, and have access and privacy to their religious and cultural sites; the right to use and control their ceremonial objects; the right to the repatriation of their human remains." States shall seek to enable and access -- enable the access and/or repatriate ceremonial objects and human remains and their possession through fair, transparent, and effective mechanisms developed in conjunction with indigenous peoples concerned. Article 19 provides the following: "States shall consult and cooperate in good faith with the indigenous peoples concerned through their own representative institutions in order to obtain their free prior and informed consent before adopting and implementing legislation or administrative measures that may affect them." In addition to these standards, in U.S. federal law, the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act protects Native American burial sites when any federal funds are being used and provides best practices that should be followed by cities and towns as well. I hope that the cities of Quincy and Boston can take these minimum standards into account when engaging with the human remains that exist on Long Island, and take this opportunity to engage tribes in the area with the goal of seeking their free prior and informed consent before any further projects take place that will affect these important historical sites. It's really important to actively seek participation from and include local tribes in decision-making that involves the remains of their ancestors, so I thank you for providing the space for that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any -- no questions? Thank you for your testimony. Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gareth Howling Crane. I'm Cheyenne Pawnee from the North America Indian Center of Boston. I would like to speak on behalf of the Munsee Delaware Nation out of Ontario. Dear city council members, on behalf of the chief and council and members of the Munsee Delaware Nation, I would like to thank you all for the serious concern you are taking towardwards to Indian burial grounds on Long Island. Our ancestors once occupied and were responsible for extensive lands in the present states of Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and New York. We have long been involved in efforts to respect and memorialize the tragic history of our ancestors' connection to both Deer Island and Long Island. These efforts have included other tribes from the Northeast, and together we speak for those who no longer have a voice. Over the centuries, the progress of civilization has resulted in the obliteration of our sacred Where such sites still exist, we must make all efforts to preserve and memorialize this We appreciate your offer to appear at your council members and meetings to discuss this matter, but are unable to do so at this time. However, we are hoping that there will be further opportunities to take part in discussions as to just what can be done to honor the memories of those who perished at Long Island. Sincerely, Mark Peters, Munsee Delaware Nation. And I would like to thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you so much. Thanks.
So I'm going to be making some comments on behalf of Chief Richard Obumswen from the Grand Council of the Webanaki Nation, who could not be here but has asked me to fill in. And I just thought I'd reiterate comments made by the joint council. The Webanaki Grand Council is composed of the Odunak Abenaki Nation, and the Welenak Abenaki Nation, and Quebec, Canada. And they have sent correspondence to the city of Boston, and so that's relevant certain points, the policy points that they would like made. So just to have this as part of the public record, I thought I'd read from their correspondence to the city of Boston. The Webanaki Nation is a participant government in the Mohicanu National Confederacy, the MNC, and the Mohicania Intertribal Committee on Deer Island, or MICDI. Our government has been involved in and supportive of the work of preserving Deer Island and other MNC issues since February 1992. And our government and the governments of the Iluna, Lunap, Lakuit Delaware Nation Council, and the Six Nations Council have reaffirmed our past support and have appointed representatives to coordinate information and communication relating to our interest on these issues. The Nadakina Office Director of the Grand Council of the Webanaki Nation, Suzie Obumswen, has appointed -- been appointed by our government to coordinate with the MICDI, MNC governments, and to communicate our interests relating to the Webanaki Nation in Boston and elsewhere. The government of the Webanaki Nation is supportive of MICDI policies, including: A) the repatriation of Deer Island to federal Indian Trust status; B) the repatriation of the native burial ground on Long Island as described by the Massachusetts State Archaeologist in 1992, from the concentration camp period of 1676 to federal Indian Trust status; C) the memorial of the First Nations on Deer Island in Boston Harbor as promised by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in 1991 to the First Nations as directed through a consultation process as described by the MICDI Indian Community Meetings Proposal; Point D: implementation of the MICDI Community Meetings Proposal as supported by numerous BCRs, which are band council resolutions, and by a resolution of the Assembly of First Nations, AFN, and the National Congress of American Indians, NCAI. Point number five E: the MICDI Joint Educational Initiative requiring Native history, including that of Deer Island, to be taught on a secondary level in public schools in Massachusetts. So on behalf of the government of the Webanaki Nation, they're glad that Counselor Harris is opening this opportunity to present before the government of the city of Quincy the concerns of their nations and the other nations that are present here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Gary? Thank you for everything that you do, Gary. Thank you.
So hello, my name is Jean-Luc Peritz. I am a member of the Tunica Biloxi Tribe of Louisiana, which is federally recognized, based out of Marksville, Louisiana, where my family does language and culture preservation work. And here locally, I'm president of the Board of Directors at the North American Indian Center of Boston. Now, you know, I think that Louisiana Indian like me, what do I have to say about any of this? And I just want to say that it's, you know, as I've been doing the work here that I've done with the North American Indian Center of Boston, I've come to find that what happens here in Massachusetts spirals out and impacts not only the rest of the United States, but the First Nations in Canada as well. I'm also very aware of the impacts of having your ancestors' graves be desecrated. Ten years before I was born, an amateur archaeologist excavated one of our ancestral Tunica villages. He took what was then called the largest cache of Native American trade goods, human remains, and so forth, and eventually leased it to Harvard Peabody Museum, where it stayed. We didn't repatriate this -- all of these sacred objects and human remains until 20 years after the fact. And so I saw what my family went through. I saw what my grandfather went through as our first tribal chairman, not only to get a state recognition and then to get us federal recognition, because in the United States, if you don't have these tools of recognition, or you have some other stumbling block that your community falls upon, you can be deemed not the legal heirs of your ancestors' bones. So I'm very thankful for all of the things that my grandfather and his generation went through, not only to get us recognition status, but to repatriate those human remains and sacred objects. But it didn't have to happen, because they could have stayed in the ground. Those graves didn't need to be desecrated. So now here I am, North American Indian Center of Boston, combined history of Boston Indian Council. We've been here for 50 years, and in August 2017, we reaffirmed our collaboration with MICDI, MNC. Our organization was designated as a liaison for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for resident members of tribes outside of the current borders who have historical government-to-government relationships, such as the Mohicanu National Confederacy. This was done by the executive order of Governor Michael Dukakis in 1976. On February 29th, 1992, it was at NACOB that MNC was historically reestablished with the creation of the Confederacy Council. MICDI was also created at that meeting to serve as the official representation on all matters of concern to MNC regarding Deer Island and, might I say, the Boston Harbor Islands, including Long Island. Our elder at NACOB, our elder and community member, John Sam Sapiel of the Penobscot Nation, served as Mohicanu National Confederacy Bureau of Political Affairs Acting Director and Coordinator of MICDI. Sam, as we say, walked on in 2007. He survived by his wife Shirley Mills, and she is a founding member of the Boston Indian Council, which is a predecessor to NACOB, as I said. It was because of this organizational history that the current Board of Directors currently It was because of this organizational history that the current Board of Directors, currently represented by my colleagues Tom Frederick and Gary Holling Crane, we decided to reaffirm our collaboration with MICDI. Broadly, we have supported educational initiatives and fostering cultural awareness. The upcoming hearing with the city of Quincy, this hearing, is our opportunity for our community members and their representative government officials to speak to these concerns. And might I add, as my colleague Tom Frederick so eloquently put, "These aren't just bones in soil, they have names that are attached to them." And we have to do honor to them. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Very well done. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I think that's it.
So with that, I'd like to reach out to the councilors and would like to speak their mind. Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to sit and to listen and to learn from all of you. The timing of this, you know, makes it a little bit more emotional for me, I think, because in the Chinese culture, we always have, particularly around this time of year, a celebration where we go to the graves where our ancestors are buried, and we have sort of a celebration with them. You know, we bring food, and there's drinks, and we celebrate essentially with our ancestors. And so I just did that this weekend for my grandparents, and it's a lot of fun because you get to see your family members and sort of reminisce a little bit and really find a way spiritually to connect with those who are no longer with us. And I just, you know, hearing your stories and, you know, the bravery you guys have to be open and honest with us here today is really moving, because I couldn't imagine being in the position where you are and not having that opportunity to connect with your ancestors and your family. I mean, it's heartbreaking. And I want to thank you for coming here tonight and really opening our eyes, you know, with what's happening right here, sort of in our neighborhood, and to share your experiences and your family's histories with us. It's really moving and it's really important. So I thank you for taking the time to do that. And thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for having this hearing tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy.
Harris, I also want to thank you all for your testimony. And as a few were up talking, I was just thinking of the cemetery that we have next door here to City Hall and all the history we have, and all the preserving that we do in regards to keeping an eye on our ancestors and making sure that our cemeteries and other areas are well-preserved and well-taken care of. And I know that Counselor Harris has been very involved with Long Island. And some of the literature here that I've been just going over, it's something to be looked at and taken care of. It's land that, if it's been touched now, it should remain the way it is out there, but only preserved, just like you folks were talking about your ancestors in that area out there. It shouldn't be a place where the soil's turned up, development happens, et cetera. Quincy takes great pride in preserving its ancestry. There's so much here that folks don't know about in the city of Quincy, and a lot, period, in the Boston area. And you make great points tonight, so you have my support. And I know that I support Counselor Harris in all he's doing with Long Island to keep it the way it is and to make it even better in regards to what you folks want. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, Counselor Mahoney.
I'm going to reiterate a little bit about what everybody else had said, but I just want to thank you for coming up as well, because this has been a debate, obviously, Long Island is, we have some concerns here for Quincy as well. But I think through Counselor Harris's leadership, we've been able to open our eyes to multiple reasons why we want to protect that island. And coming together, joining together, I think our story is getting stronger. So I just wanted to thank you all for coming out and educating us, because that's really what's happening here today. I mean, there's a lot of stories, and there's a lot of information you provided and heartfelt information, but at the same time, it's also historical and relevant in this world that we live in now, when we so often forget, or can easily forget, of what brings us here and how we got here. And obviously, it's important that we take care of each other. And I really do represent the fact that this has been a long, long and hard-fought fight for your culture to be able to maintain itself, and it's important that we do and respect it. So I thank you very much for coming out and sharing that with us tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. Anybody else to speak? With that, then I'm going to speak. Last but not least, I'm not going to talk about a bridge, I'm not going to talk about a city to the north of us, but I am going to talk about my next step with you folks, and thank you for coming tonight again. I can't thank you enough. At the next council meeting, I will be introducing a resolution, and it's going to be a pretty healthy, long resolution. And it'll have a lot of correspondences from this council to several people. The first group of people that I am going to ask this council to correspond to is to the Massachusetts Congressional Delegation, Senator Warren, Senator Mackey, and Congressman Lynch, in support of the MICDI Indian Community Meetings Proposal, which would require the National Park Service to hold public meetings on each of the reservation communities, as had been done for non-Indian communities, to gather input from tribal members and their governments, the means to develop the programs and policies to protect and preserve the Indian burial grounds on the Boston Harbor Islands as required by law. The second correspondence I'll be asking, my colleagues who have supported me and have supported you folks, is a correspondence seeking an investigation relating to the dumping of human remains in the city of Quincy from Deer Island in September 1994, an intentional effort by the MWRA to inquire if there were violations of law in the intentional disposing of human remains from Deer Island in the city of Quincy, possibly to either the District Attorney of Norfolk County or the District Attorney of Suffolk County. The third correspondence would be to the Massachusetts Advisory Committee of the United States Commission on Civil Rights in support of the MNC Proposal of January 2, 2017, for an agreement in principle and leaders summit, particularly calling for an investigation by the Department of Justice, together with the support of the offices of the Inspector General of the United States Department of Interior and the Inspector General of the United States Environmental Protection Agency, into violations of federal law and federal regulations relating to Deer Island and the Boston Harbor Islands. That will be at the next council meeting, I promise. To be people... Thank you. And thank you all. So with that, without any other testimony, again, my heart's with you all, and I know your heart is with the city of Quincy. So thank you very much. Thank you, folks. That ends this portion of... We'll take a slight recess, please. Okay, we're back. So we're on 2019-53, adoption of a five-year multi-hazard mitigation plan. I will ask the mayor's office to start us off.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could. First, before we get into the subject matter, I, on behalf of the mayor, would like to thank you for coordinating the previous session, giving people at home, the community, the ability to listen to some of that testimony was obviously very powerful. So on behalf of the mayor, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before the committee tonight is the update of the city's five-year hazard mitigation plan, which is a requirement under the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. So this is a update, a document that we've had now several times over. What it does is it documents historic impacts from natural hazards, things like major storms, flooding, other potential natural hazards that the city faces on a regular basis. It educates the public to the potential danger of these hazards, such as flooding, major storm events, those sorts of things. It is a requirement for much of the federal grant money we get from FEMA to have this plan in place for disaster mitigation grants. We have a number that we've applied for in the past, we have a number that we've secured, we have at least one that we're in the process of working on right now, and that's why this document is so vital. And what it does is it sets a framework. It doesn't lock us in to anything. This is not a budget document, this is not a request for any funding for any specific capital project. What this does is set a framework by outlining a number of potential mitigation projects throughout the city and using various formulas to determine which projects in which neighborhoods the city may be taking a look at. But again, it doesn't set any timetables, it doesn't say this project must be first, this project will be last, it's not asking for your approval on anything like that. All it is is setting a guidepost for the city to follow over the next five years so we can have the opportunity to apply for some of these federal grants. The 2019 plan before you tonight makes a number of improvements over the previous years, most notably this year through, in large part, the help of a grant, we enlisted the help of a professional engineering firm, and tie and bond to help us navigate through this process and really make the document more accessible to the public, more readable, more viable as a living document that sort of highlights all the things that are going on and some of the things that we've highlighted. We also have with us tonight Wooded Incarne Joe Shea, who's also helpful in a number of the specific projects that are outlined in the document. This 2019 plan brings us in line with the 2018 state plan. It also helps us coordinate with the federal government relative to FEMA grants, as I mentioned. It takes into consideration the effects of a change in climate, it's another important factor here. This work product that we delivered to this body a couple weeks ago is the result of a lot of hard work, and that hard work was coordinated by Deputy Planning Director Rob Stevens with the assistance of Paul Costello, our city engineer, the team from Tie and Bond, Dave Murphy, who's unable to be here with us tonight, and Gabrielle Belfitt, who will be leading the presentation on the Hazard Mitigation Plan for us tonight. So with that, I want to, on behalf of the mayor, thank the team that put this together. It is quite a product. Again, it is a very workable guidepost. And with that, I would like, with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, turn it over to Gabrielle for a brief presentation on some of the nuts and bolts of what's in the plan.
Yes, please. Welcome, Gabrielle.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm delighted to be here and walk you through what went on during the past year putting together the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan. Just let me test it. I do want to recognize that we had a comprehensive team throughout the city, the offices are listed up there, who participated in the review and discussions of multiple sections of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I see a couple of you have copies of the plan on your table. It's also available online through the Planning Department's website, and I'm happy to say there is also an eight-page summary of the plan, which I believe, is it also on the website? Not yet. So the eight-page summary for citywide will also be on the Planning Board's website, as well as a four-page summary of each neighborhood throughout Quincy. So someone who just really wants to focus in on what some of the findings were for their particular area, they might find those summaries helpful rather than wading through the hefty document that the plan is. So the reasons Chris touched on why the city needed to prepare the plan, it's required for the city if they want to apply for hazard mitigation grants. It's a great way to document historic impacts from natural hazards and the vulnerability of areas of town to those hazards. It's placed to memorialize it in a written document. It prioritizes mitigation projects, and it also helps improve scoring for the community rating system. We found out today, in fact, that Quincy's rating system had been improved. It goes down, the closer you get to one, the better you are. So it's gone from an eight to a seven, which is a great achievement, resulting in lower insurance premiums for homeowners who have national flood insurance. And also, it's a great opportunity to educate residents of the town about the risk of natural hazards and the benefits of mitigating those hazards, so it enables the community to respond and recover more quickly. and recover more quickly. Oops, there we go. So, the process is really, it's a four-step process. The first is looking at all of the natural hazards risks that have impacted the city in the past or might be able to impact it in the future, looking across the city to identify those key community assets that would be vulnerable to risk. This is everything from societal community assets to infrastructure to environmental community assets, and those large economic contributors to the Quincy. And then, looking at projects that would improve resiliency and prioritizing those for areas that are most at risk. So, that's basically the four-step process that we went through, and I'm going to just touch on each one of those areas quickly. But I do want to mention, the process started with drafting the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was submitted to MEMA last December. We presented at a planning board, and the planning board voted to send it to MEMA for review. MEMA quickly approved the plan, sent it to FEMA, and in less than a month, really, a matter of weeks, FEMA approved the plan in January conditionally upon adoption by the city. So, once the city adopts the plan, it then becomes a fully approved Hazard Mitigation Plan, and grants can be issued. And where we are tonight is that second-to-the-last step, community adopts the final plan. So, that is our goal after tonight's presentation, to move forward to get the approval to adopt the plan. Chris mentioned those 2018-19 plan improvements are, this plan is consistent with the 2018 Massachusetts State Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a great step forward. The 2018 plan, for the first time, incorporated climate change as a natural hazard risk, and Quincy's plan is consistent with the data and the methodologies used in the state plan. And another big benefit is that we looked at natural hazard risk and vulnerability assessments on a geographic base. So, we divided the city up into eight geographic planning areas, and then we looked at community assets and natural hazards and how they interacted in each one of those geographic planning areas, so you could compare and contrast from neighborhood to neighborhood, and that, we feel that's a very useful update. So, here's a view of how we broke the city up into the geographic planning areas. It's really watershed-based predominantly. We refined some of the lines to correspond to roads in major landforms, and it differs a little bit from watersheds at the coastline. So, Quincy has witnessed damage from flooding and rain events over years to various degrees. FEMA repetitive loss data shows storm surge-related loss impacts mostly the coastal areas, as well as inland flooding areas along Furnace Brook. Within the past 10 years alone, Quincy's witnessed 21 coastal flooding events, including record-high tides and storm surge. Over the past five years, the city has gone through a number of planning studies to better understand the vulnerability to flood events, including how future climate change might worsen this risk and what the city can do to mitigate the impact. Grayson, in January, broke record-high tides in Boston Harbor, so that is breaking the 1978 high-tide record, and you're well aware of the damages that Riley and Skylar did in March nor'easters. So, as we were developing those plans, those events happened, and we revised data and we revised our modeling based on the worst storms happening as we were writing the plan. So, that was cool. We identified, as I said, all the hazards that could impact Quincy historically or in the future, based on the available information to date, and we looked at everything from tsunamis to drought to sea level rise, coastal flooding, ice storms, shoreline changes. And then, looking at the significance of each hazard based on the history of occurrence, the geographic extent of impact, economic impact, and the likelihood of future occurrence, all the natural hazards were ranked, and the highest hazard, it's not really a surprise, coastal and inland flooding, nor'easters, coastal erosion, and severe winter weather. So, it's not really a surprise. The national flood insurance is a good indicator of where damages have occurred. Repetitive loss and severe repetitive loss claims can be mapped, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with that terminology, repetitive loss is where there's two or more flood claims on any one property greater than 1,000, and a severe repetitive loss is with four or more separate claims greater than 5,000, or two claims that are greater than the value of the property. Quincy ranks the fifth-highest in the state of Massachusetts for repetitive loss claims. 174 claims, 174 properties are listed between 1979 and 1970 with over 540 claims. There's a map there that's showing where those repetitive and severe repetitive loss claims are, and you can see they're predominantly within the 100-year flood zones, but they're also located in areas where there's poor drainage that are outside of the flood zones. So, we've got the inland flooding predominantly around Furnace Brook, and, I'm sorry, the coastal ones predominantly Houssneck and Germantown, and the inland or riverine flooding predominantly around Furnace Brook. And as I mentioned, additional areas of flooding occur outside of the 100-year flood from aging infrastructure and the city not being able to keep up with, the city's drainage sizing not being able to keep up with development. Since 2013, the city has spent over $17 million in drainage improvements, and they have resolved many problems, but that is a big ticket item for them to continue to work on. So, and as you know, the areas with both coastal and inland flooding are especially impacted by storm surge and high tide, which is pushing up the flood. When stream discharge coincides in the same storm, and high tides result in backup of water into the inland drainage networks. The city's addressed that by installing tide gates at over 80 locations, and those tide gates need to be improved and maintained. So, just looking at the different ways that Quincy has looked at climate change over the past, they used, they looked at a methodology based on the Boston Harbor model. They looked at CZM coastal projections, and finally, at a methodology developed by the state from the New England Climate Science Center, and those are the values that are used in the Mass State Hazard Mitigation Plan. The decision to look at 2050, a midterm range, was, I'm sorry, the climate change projections go from the present up to 2100. Our feeling was, is that looking that far out to 2100, the climate change science becomes very unpredictable? So, we looked at the year 2070 as being the long-term range. The community asset inventory was done citywide, looking at different categories of people, built environment, natural environment, and the economy. There's actually a tool online that you can go to, and you can look and see where all those community assets are, and click on each one, find out the actual elevation of that community asset, the owner and the category. Here's just a map showing an area of, I believe that's Squanton, and how we're dividing the community assets up. This work is going to be used, this information is going to be used as part of the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. We'll be holding workshops later in April and going through that. Vulnerability assessment is basically an evaluation of how the community assets and properties are impacted by different natural hazards. We looked at existing flood risk, starting with 100-year flood plan maps. Over 20% of Quincy developed land is in the flood hazard, 13% coastal hazards, and 7% inland. Those inland properties' value is over $0.75 billion, and the coastal property is over $1 billion. I mentioned before, geographically, most inland flooding is in the Furnace Brook North area, and actually, most of the coastal flooding is occurring in the Marymount Black's Creek Future flood risk was determined using sea level rise data, looking at 1, 2, and 4 feet of sea level rise. The 1 and 2 foot is, aligns with that 60% probability of occurrence for 2030 to 27 for Boston Harbor. And you can see here that there are a lot of properties that will be impacted as sea level rise occurs. So, the most important part of this plan, and if I only had to talk about one thing, I would be talking about the mitigation strategy. That's Section 7 in the plan, and if you only read one thing, take a look at the mitigation strategy. It starts out with defining the goals for resiliency vision, and it basically reads as Quincy empowers residents, business communities, and city leaders to make near, mid, and long-term changes that will reduce future climate change impact, protect its vital community assets, and adapt to changes already occurring. So, that's kind of the basis for picking the projects and the process we went through to prioritize them. So, all of the mitigation actions that we include support that resiliency vision and support the hazard mitigation goals and objectives, which are included in that Chapter 7. So, I won't really go over the details on that. The process is looking at mitigation strategies that address the vulnerabilities in the geographic areas, and then going through a process to prioritize them. We use a method, FEMA-approved method called STAPLE. The STAPLE method looks at social, technical, administrative, political, legal, economic, and environmental impacts for each mitigation project. They're ranked, put into a spreadsheet, and the process, you end up with high priority, mid-priority, and low-priority actions. So, up here on this slide that no one can read is a list of the high-priority mitigation actions in order by year of implementation. And as Chris mentioned, this is a process we went through to give the city a place to start and to use to make recommendations for funding, but it's not anything that's cast in stone, and it's not anything that we have to start with the first project and work our way down. And then, just, we reordered those high-priority mitigation actions to get an idea of the numbers that were recommended in each geographic area. So, there's 52 projects altogether, and once the plan is adopted, the cycle begins again. So, if there is any comments or concerns about the plan, rest assured that as soon as it's adopted, we can start revising it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Counselors, questions? Comments? Yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much for the presentation, and looking at both packages here, going back and forth, the detail is tremendous, which I knew it was. Ty &amp; Bond has done a tremendous job on all our paperwork and all the help that they've given us over the past 18 months or so. I know that this has gone back a couple of years, I think, in the making to get to where it is now, and I believe, at this point, just to make sure I'm on the right sheet of music, that FEMA has seen the plan. We're at the point now where I think everything's been covered in that from A to Z, that the council would then go ahead and give its blessing and approve it tonight, so we can move on, because I know, at least in my ward, and I know this is a hazardous mitigation plan for the city, and I'm in Ward 1, I see a lot of familiar pictures I don't want to see anymore in the package, but I know this is for the entire city. So, I think we're at that point, if I'm not off-base.
Correct. There's really not an opportunity to change this plan without going back to square one, going to FEMA, which is why I said that if there's something, if there's a comment or there's something in that you want to see addressed, that's wonderful. We'll start making notes.
Right. No, I don't think, I think you folks have covered everything. I know that everybody in that first row to your left has been involved, has done their due diligence and detailed work in all of this, so I want to thank them. I'd like to, hopefully, like to make a motion to move on this this evening and get it done, so we don't waste any time. I know that we have some pump houses that are in discussion down on Ward 1, that we've jumped some hurdles locally with MEMA, and now we're waiting for FEMA to get involved. So, I'd like to see it keep rolling. I think everybody here would too, because, as I said, it's just not Ward 1 thing, it's Furnace Brook, it's West Quincy, it's Squanton, it's the whole work. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan tonight.
Very good, very good, Counselor Mahoney. I mean, McCarthy, sorry about that. Counselor DeWone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Counselor McCarthy, on all your hard work working with this, this group, this mitigation, adoption, action plan. Just to back up here, just for, just for one year, I guess I could say, is, we're coming up on the one-year, one-month mark with the disastrous March 2nd, March 2nd to March 4th storm, which came through here and brought on devastation. I've never seen anything like that in our backyard. I'm a Ward 1 resident, as well as a counselor-at-large. I live on Chickatahut Road, which is a street that is at the front of this seawall repair existence, and I just saw us, as a city, as a group, go through the endeavors of people being without power for almost a whole week, people being stuck on a peninsula, an island, basically, the destruction of Post Island Road, which I could not believe that the wind would, the water would get up that high, and people are in the process right now with getting their houses taken down and built back up. I know Counselor McCarthy's been working real hard with the planning and all the different conservation boards and meetings that he has to do. I know I brought forth a resolution back in November, before the snow season, you know, before the high winds were going to come through, luckily, with the guidance under Al Gracioso and the DPW Commissioner and his, and his team, that did a fantastic job with mitigating a lot of other semi-storms, not to these nature of stuff, but with catch basins and clearing things and, and just pre-storm activity to be ready for these, just in case. You never know when the turn's going to take. Just a little elaboration on, I know I brought forward the resolution about the pumping stations, and I see on here the Stormwater Pumping Station, 1 to 2 years, Houssneck in Germantown, and then I also see Pump Station Rehabilitation, which is Marymount Black's Creek, which is a 1, 2-year. a 1, 2-year timeframe, which is on the front end of this mitigation plan, which I like to see. Have you figured out where this is going to be located, or is it, was it our existing one? Are we moving it? And can you, give me any regulations on, when you do the pumping, where does that water have to go? Would anybody be able to answer those questions?
In regard to the Post Island Pump Station, the city has applied for a pre-disaster mitigation grant for $2.8 million. That's in the works, we should hear on that in June timeframe. As far as the specific location, we have to do hydraulic modeling, and we're in the process of doing that now. Ty and Bond has taken the lead on the modeling right along the coast. The Corps of Engineers will be involved doing some additional modeling in the strand area, and there's a pipe that goes underneath that. So we're in the process of, through modeling, figuring out where the water and the best place for the pump station.
Now, is this going to be on the Post Island roadside, or, I mean, I know when the water had seeped through that wall, it had gone all the way to C Street, and the water went up to at least, I'd say, 5 feet onto the dike. So it was, it just crept its way up that area. Where particularly are you looking? Is it on Post Island? Is it more down C Street? Is it by the dike?
We're looking at Post Island, we're looking at C Street, we're looking at the other side.
Okay.
The water crested C Street.
I know.
And impacted the waters on Post Island. And then during the low tide, the capacity of the system couldn't handle it. A lot of the outfall pipes were below the low tide, even on the third cycle going down. So the pump station on Post Island, for example, would have helped mitigate the draining of the system. So we're looking at three potential pumps, maybe one pump house, high-capacity, mid-capacity, low-capacity, because you have to pump it at different levels.
Once the water gets through, it has to get back out. Now, where are you pumping it to? Are you going to pump it back into the ocean? Is there an area that you can pump it to, to let it sit?
The plan is to pump it back into the ocean.
Okay.
We may have to pump it someplace inland first. The permitting for that hasn't been done yet.
Okay, and you can do that? You can pump it, you can pump the water back into the ocean? Is that correct?
There's permitting involved.
Permanating involved, okay.
Look at that.
I just want to thank your team for recognizing that resolution I brought forward in November. I'm very happy to see and be a participant of Counsel McCarthy's seawall repairs, which gave us a lot of information on this. Does this have anything to do with the funding that we gave to, in conjunction with Boston, to do that resiliency? We did a resiliency, we appropriated some funding to go in pair with Boston. Does this have anything to do with this mitigation? Or is this a separate?
That's the $100,000.
$100,000?
That's what we did.
Yeah, the $100,000, okay, for the study? Okay.
Counselor, that is separate. That $100,000 was for the, to plan for the barrier.
Yes.
Do a study in the barrier.
Okay, so that's a separate entity?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're taking care of all the things. I want to thank you, Commissioner Gracioso, for all your hard work, Paul Gustello, Woodward and Curran, the whole gang. Thank you for you guys coming out tonight. I like to see this. We're putting things into action here, so very happy to be here, you guys. Thank you.
I just, I didn't want to reiterate that I'm involved in the application of grants, and so we're pending on a pre-disaster mitigation grant for the pump station, and without this adoption, they can't give us a grant. So that's clear.
I'm happy to support this with my fellow counselor here that made the motion. I know we don't have to second here, but I'm going to be in full support of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona. Counselor Liang.
Whether this is to you or to the mayor chief of staff, I just, you know, I think that the work that you guys have done over the years, and particularly, you know, how much you've had to change, given the different storms that have come your way during the planning process, I think is really critical, and I'm happy to see that, you know, we have a plan in place that's going to really dictate the work ahead of us, whether it's, you know, within the DPW or in the Planning Department with our development across the city. Pertinent to our role up here, I think, you know, getting an understanding of what's to come is really important, because, you know, any costs that come with mitigation, I think, is obviously upon us to make sure that, you know, we're supporting all of these repairs that we have to make. And so, you know, the mitigation is one aspect of it, but I also want to know, is this also going to drive any proactive steps we're going to take as a city to make sure that not only are we prepared in case of a disaster? Because you can only prepare so much, right? Mother Nature is Mother Nature, and to an extent, we can't predict 100% what's going to happen, but it sounds like this is going to prepare us to the best of our abilities for any disasters that come our way. But are we also then going to, now, in this process of these 52 projects, also implement some proactive measures too?
There is, there's opportunities in there for education, public education, where a lot of the items like that, they're open-ended. They're really not, they're called, they're stated as, "The city will engage in public education to help prepare for the impacts of climate change." So there's open-ended projects in here that address topics in a more general way. We're engaging in workshops with the public, more like a focused public workshop in April. The MVP will be using the Hazard Mitigation Plan as a base to work from, and then having each of the participants have, you know, kind of give their feel on the projects. So there's going to be opportunity for public engagement and a discussion about emphasizing how to use the information that's in the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, so will the Hazard Mitigation Plan then, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand, because I think I'm of the understanding that it provides opportunity for education so folks can be prepared in case of a disaster, but I'm also hoping that we can take this opportunity to take this wealth of information to then also drive what we're going to do as a city.
Yeah.
To make any necessary improvements, or again, you know, to physically fix our infrastructure to be as prepared as possible. So will this also help to lay out those plans as well, or is that more on the purview of our?
It's a step in that direction. The hope is that every city department takes a look at this. We did a capabilities assessment of each department in the city of Quincy that overlapped with hazard mitigation, that they'll take this information and they'll look at the services that they provide, the plans that they write, and have it be consistent. So it is an opportunity to reach out into every aspect of the city, as well as public information as well.
Okay, so this is also for the next five years, but what flexibility do we have? If we, you know, as a body and as a community, take that next step, we approve this plan and it goes back to FEMA, and we move forward on it? I mean, this is the plan, it's the five-year plan, but then what kind of flexibility do we have to make any changes to it? If, God forbid, within that next five years, we see another disastrous storm?
You can make changes to the plan at any time.
Okay. It won't affect what we've already approved in Santa Fima today, if we end up doing that today?
No.
Okay. And it won't then jeopardize any funding that we could potentially get from them as well?
Because it's going to be the date that you have the plan, and then as you make revisions to the plan, you just will note it. It's not, it's not going to go back to FEMA for revision. It will be just your working plan, updates in your working plan.
Okay, that's good to know, because sometimes that process can be really strenuous, and sometimes when it comes to these, I think, things, you know, if we have a plan and we're ready to implement it, and we're ready to make these kinds of changes we need to be preventative in the city, I wouldn't want bureaucracy to hold up any of that.
That's part of the review process. The city is going to have, they have a core team, and they're going to meet every year, and they're going to discuss the plans that were recommended, progress that's been made, changes in hazard mitigation that might warrant going a slightly different tract. It's a very, very flexible plan. That's discussed in the plan evaluation and maintenance plan. So there's a requirement to report back in on the progress of the plan.
That's great. I'm really excited. I'm glad that we are sort of meeting these challenges head-on as a city and that we're working with you guys to do so. I'm not going to pretend to be the expert when it comes to these particular issues, but I do know that it is something that we have to be front of mind with, and I'm glad to see that our different departments are working with you guys to make sure that we are addressing this head-on. So thank you for your time, thank you for your work on this, and for, you know, presenting to us tonight this information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, and I hope you read it.
Yeah. No, it's good, it's helpful information to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Thank you. We're going to take, we're going to recess and go into the regular council session, and then, don't go anywhere, because there's still a few more questions, so, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the April 1st, 2019, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Counselor King. Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
President Kroll.
Present.
Six members.
Six members, we have a quorum. At this point in time, folks, if you please rise and join me in a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you kindly. Madam Clerk, the first item on the agenda, please.
First, I'm going to read into the record the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible. And number one on the agenda is 2019-063, Order Nomination and Election of City Clerk.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor tonight to nominate a young lady who's done a tremendous job. She's filled big shoes here at the city council and for the city, and has done a tremendous job overall. And so it's my pleasure this evening to nominate Nicole El Crispo for city clerk for another term.
Motion placed into nomination for Nicole Crispo. On the motion, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, President Kroll. It's a pleasure to get here just in the nick of time to second the nomination of Nicole Crispo. I just, I know everyone up here feels the same, as well as the several counselors before all of us, who've been tremendously helped by Nicole, not only by her knowledge at her job, her love of the city, but her true love of helping people and the friendship that she has offered to all of us. So I'm so pleased that she has decided to stay another term and happily second the nomination of Nicole Crispo.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, second by Counsel Hughes. Counsel DeBona, do you have something? Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to just say a few words about Nicole Crispo, and I'm happy to support her as well. Just, you know, coming on to the council four years ago and having Joe Shea some big shoes to fill, and he was on here for four months, and then Nicole Crispo came in and did a fantastic job over the last few years. I just want to say you've been very reliable, very accessible to talk to on all different issues, whether it be at the polling stations and all those different things about, you know, just safety and public safety of the children. You've just been, you've been a great clerk, and I want to thank you for all your work, and I'm looking forward to the next few years.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, second by Counsel Hughes, to place into nomination Nicole Crispo for city clerk, and I would ask Counsel Liang.
Finish your thought if you had, I didn't want to cut you off.
Oh, no, please, I was just going to roll, so, yeah, please.
No, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Nikki. She has been phenomenal, not only here, you know, on the city council, but I've gotten to know her over my course of just being a resident here in the city, or a business owner here in the city, and now as a counselor here in the city, and she has been amazing, and I can't say enough nice things about her, but I want to take the opportunity to thank her for just all around, being a phenomenal person, being a phenomenal employee of the city, and I'm really excited to be able to support her again tonight. So thank you for the opportunity to say so.
Absolutely, Counsel, thank you. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, second by Counsel Hughes. The response at point of roll will be Nicole Crispo. Nicole Crispo, will you please lead us in the roll?
Counsel DeBona.
Nicole Crispo.
Counsel Harris.
Nicole Crispo.
Counsel Hughes.
Nicole Crispo.
Counsel Liang.
Nicole Crispo.
Counsel Mahoney.
Nicole Crispo.
Counsel McCarthy.
Nicole Crispo.
President Kroll.
Nicole Crispo.
Seven members.
Congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Would you care for the microphone? Madam Clerk?
I just want to say thank you to all of you for being so good to me and over the last three years, and I am humbled and honored to serve as your city clerk for you and all the residents of the city. Thank you.
And we are happy to have you, so thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is number two, 2019-064, a gift for $625 from various donors for DIA.
Motion made by Counsel DeBona, away of the reading. On the motion, Counselor.
Just like to make a motion to approve this and send a letter of thank you.
Thank you. Motion made by Counsel Thank you. Motion made by Counsel DeBona, second by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
President Kroll.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members. The gift is accepted. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Next is number three, 2019-065, A Resolve for Financial Literacy Month 2019, Student Loan Debt.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This is something that I brought forward as a city council president, similar to what we did about a year ago when we took up two different subject areas during April, which obviously is nationally known as Financial Literacy Month. Last year, we talked through Social Security, as well as examined some of the tools that the city of Quincy currently has in their toolboxes, in their toolbox, to help residents through, you know, various tax situations, abatement situations, et cetera. This year, obviously, a very wide subject matter that we're going to facilitate a discussion on, and it's student loan debt. Obviously, it is an issue that affects many individuals throughout the country to the tune of 1.3-plus trillion dollars. You know, the goal of the exercise is similar to what we did last year. We will provide the forum through Counsel Mahoney's leadership in the Education Committee. Thank you for your willingness to do that. And we will have a speaker come in to kind of, again, just distribute information on subjects that sometimes are somewhat complicated for people and hope through, hopefully through the mediums such as Quincy Access Television and our friends in the, in the local media, just provide a level of comfortability for people to digest these complex subjects within the comfort of their own home. So, with that, I would just make a motion to refer to the Education Committee for a meeting to be scheduled later this evening. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. The item heads over to education. All right. So, at this point, we are going to approve the previous meeting minutes from March 18, 2019. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. I'm going to take our recess from the regularly scheduled city council meeting, go back to the Environmental Committee, and we'll be back in session with the regularly scheduled city council meeting. So, brief recess.
Going back, no.
We're going to reopen now the Environmental and Public Health Committee meeting, and Counsel, let's speak, Counsel Mahoney. Oh, sorry.
So, could we just go back, and you did this in 2013 as well, correct?
No, I did not.
Did the city do a plan in 2013?
Their plan, the last, the last time the plan was updated was 2013.
The last time the plan, so, so, is it, is it substantially changed since 2013 as far as the depth of the information?
It has very much substantially changed.
Okay. And in the 2013 plan, did, did we see much accomplished from the 2013 plan for the list of, of potential issues that we had?
There is, in the beginning of the mitigation section, in chapter seven.
Yep.
Which is the most important chapter to read. There's a discussion, the first table, 7.1.
Yep.
Is review of the 2013 mitigation actions that were in the 2013 plan. There was, I don't exactly know what the number is, four, four and a half pages worth of projects. Some of them are still in progress. Many of them were completed.
Mm-hmm.
A few of them were deleted.
Yes.
As not being important anymore.
Okay.
And a few of them were revised based on circumstances changing.
Reason why I ask is I know that, that the presentation you provided to us is very, very big, and sometimes it's helpful to see what we were able to accomplish from the last one to this one, although it's in your pres, it's in, it's in the big binder that you provided to us, but for the general public to be able to see the accomplishments of the city, as well as what we've got accomplished and what we're future working towards. It's not really, it's just meant to be just helpful because some people would like to see that, so.
Right. Well, they're, they're very, they're very specific projects here, and some of the projects, we have a category which is basically the administrative capabilities of each department.
Mm-hmm.
And some of these projects which were listed as mitigation strategies were really more talking about capabilities within departments rather than projects.
Right.
So, we reorganized the 2013 one for proj, for things that were ongoing.
Yeah.
To put into capabilities, such as participation in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Well, the reason why I bring that up, though, again, is that this is our second go-around for this, so 2013. This is our second five-year plan, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, and I, the package is like this big that you gave to us, so it's, it's a lot.
Yes. There's, there's the eight-page summary.
No, no, I realize that, but I'm saying, in the presentation we talked about tonight, we were specifically just talking about the next five years. I just was trying to do a quick recap, I was hoping for the general audience, but this, this is really just a comprehensive plan going forward for the next five years for FEMA, that we're, we're getting approved by FEMA that will potentially open up opportunities for the city of Quincy for grant money.
Correct.
Correct.
The, in order to be successfully competitive for FEMA grants, it really wants to be in your hazard mitigation plan. You're not going to get points.
Right.
If it's, if it's a project that hasn't already been discussed and evaluated.
Right. But I also want people to know at home, too, that this is, is kind of a catch-22. If we want to be able to get FEMA or grant money for any of the projects we're doing here in Quincy, we have to apply, we have to, we have to do this five-year plan to kind of check off the boxes to be able to, to do that. But this has nothing, we're not saying we agree with FEMA's flood maps, we're not agreeing with anything other than the fact that we want to present this and be able to open opportunities for the city of Quincy to be able to potentially get grant money or get funding outside of taxpayer dollars, correct?
Right.
Generally speaking.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the, the maps that are used in here are the most recent maps that the city went through, you know, extensive period of time revising different areas. So, everything used in here is all the most up-to-date information.
And when were these maps outdated?
The last revisions were in 2017. Latest map revisions were 2017. So, very, very up-to-date information.
Those are, our map provisions are FEMA's rep, map revision.
Those are revision, the city contested the FEMA for maps when they came out.
Maps from FEMA.
Right. And so, they're the, the revised maps.
Okay.
Which were adopted by FEMA.
When is the next time, when is the next time that FEMA will be reviewing maps?
I don't know the answer to that question, but Joe does.
Good evening. I'm Joseph Shea, Senior Principal with Wooded and Current, an engineering firm that's been assisting the city with their FEMA flood maps, the topic of this current question. FEMA has initiated a process called the Risk Map Process. That is their map update process that they've done historically every six or seven or eight years. They've started the process. I'm unaware of a target completion date, but I would expect sometime in '20 or '21 would be the next time that there is a official flood insurance rate map issuance to Quincy. Since the last time the maps were updated, just to be clear, which was June 4th, 2014, there's been seven modifications or improvements because of the city driving for corrections to its maps. So, just to be clear, when we say 2017 was the last update, that was the last correction.
Last correction. And we're not anticipating any other corrections?
We're perpetually correcting the maps. It's actually ongoing annually, so we do anticipate them.
But when they will be, we'll, we'll update the maps. I just wanted to just have that clarification, too, because this is a five-year plan. I mean, we talked about FEMA in here, and the next step is us approving this plan. It will go back to FEMA, but there's no fin, and there's a list of, you know, basically you did a, an inventory of what potentially is the one-to-two-year plan, three-to-five-year plan, for potential things that could happen in the city, but this isn't a financial package. Nobody's approving anything, but there's potential money that we could qualify for, for certain assets that we might need to fix, and those priorities could change potentially depending on what's happening in the city and what potential weather hazards could be happening as well. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Within this framework.
Yeah. And there was one question that I did have in your presentation, because it was, it was when we were talking about, I mean, I know that you mentioned that climate change is a, is something that they added, potentially.
Climate change was not part of the 2013 plan. Climate change was not part of the, I forgot the date of the pet, last Massachusetts climate plan, I mean, Hazard Mitigation Plan, I forget the date of it. The state added climate change to its 2018 plan, and the, every community that participates in the Hazard Mitigation Plan has to consider every single natural hazard that's included in the state Hazard Mitigation Plan, and if they don't choose to include it, they have to state why.
Okay.
There was no reason to not include it because Quincy has gone through extensive studies discussing the impacts of climate change on coastal flooding.
Which I think every, I think every community should do.
Correct.
But as you said, the top natural hazard risks for Quincy, climate change isn't really one of them. It's really the, the culverts failing, the snows and blizzard storms and those types of things that you highlighted as your top, the top tiers.
The top, the greatest flood, the greatest natural hazard risk was severe winter weather, coastal erosion, coastal and inland flooding, and nor'easters.
Which is, I mean, that's, and then you go to the next, where you go to your next section where you kind of talk about some of the storms. The one other thing that you mentioned, it was when you were talking about the areas of flooding and concerns, and this is just for clarification for me because of what I heard. You know, you were talking about, you know, the, the backups that they're having in certain areas and then keeping up with development? What do you mean by keeping up with development?
Well, I guess, let me rephrase that to say, do you want to rephrase that?
I would.
Oh, okay. There, the infrastructure in the town, the city is constantly needing to make improvements to it, and as development occurs, more impervious surfaces are created, more runoff is generated. So, that was the connection between development, developed areas, impervious surfaces, and increased storm drainage.
Which makes complete sense. I mean, we're a city that's, it's, it's growing.
Right.
Things are changing from single-family homes to 10 units. That changes the capacity for sorage and drainage and everything else.
And the other thing that's happening is rainfall is increasing. We're getting rainfall at higher concentrations in a shorter period.
Yes.
So, some of the design calculations that, you know, may, and I shouldn't speak to them because I don't know everything about, that is stormwater.
Yeah.
But oftentimes, in other communities.
Yeah.
The capacity is undersized.
Yeah, I mean, when they, when you make a development, you're not, you're not anticipating it's going to be a, you know, five inches of rain in an hour. You're anticipating it's going to be five inches of rain in a season.
So, right. And this is, you know, this is a, a similar issue, you know, all across Massachusetts.
Right.
That, that storm drainage just is undersized as communities grow and they're constantly having to go in and make upgrades.
So, I guess the last question that I, I won't promise it's the last because sometimes it's fear's another one. When looking at this, and this is a comprehensive plan for, for, you know, for FEMA, and we're talking about that interconnectivity of departments, and we have obviously a lot of development that's going on in the city of Quincy, and we have these maps, and we have the sewer drainage that we talked about just recently in another meeting. Are we tying that development part into this plan as well as what we need to have accomplished in the, in the, I'm hoping this is going to play into somebody up here to answer, because when we have this high priority mitigation plan, imagining that there's certain sections of the city that if there's development that's happening, that we'll be able to look at and recognize that that might be a high-impact area if this development was to go on that could potentially create an issue? Is that something that we're doing when we're looking at those things?
Yeah.
See, I played right into you. I knew I was.
Thank you. Rob Stevens, Deputy Planning Director here.
Giving you all an opportunity tonight.
Yeah, thank you, with the city of Quincy. So, the, the development question is a fascinating one because a lot of what we find through our work in the planning department is a lot of old pipes.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, I was part of the project that relocated the Old Town Brook, and we were pulling out granite culvert work, and, and that was four or five years ago.
Yeah.
What you see now on the Hancock Lot is a whole new, state-of-the-art stormwater system in that lot where it used to be sheet flow right into the Town Brook. I also think of the Central Middle School redevelopment that occurred not too long ago. That was sheet flow again on that site. Now, there's a lot of water quality units installed as part of that development, and we're trying to improve the whole Butler's Pond area. Now, with the planning board, I do a lot of the planning board review with my colleagues, and we do do independent peer review engineering, and I'd have to say, reviewing the stormwater of all the new development is probably our highest priority. And, you know, having the plan, and it's one of the reasons why we quarterback the, the update this time, is because I think planning has that ability to see across the different departments and try to, you know, get this information down into those boards and committee members, into those, my colleagues in the other departments, you know, especially with the public works here. Obviously, we have the Commissioner and Paul Costello here. We work with Chen Sang and a bunch of other folks, Peter Hoyt, Mark Valpondo. We're in communication with those folks regularly on a lot of the development.
So, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about that interconnectivity because this is a five-year plan. It's for, it's obviously, it's, it's something that the city needs to be able to accomplish and get done. It's not a financial commitment to the city. It's basically a plan and something that we can use as, that we can reference and go to and recognize when we're doing those plans. I think we just had you up here the last time, and I was asking, what was our comprehensive plan of all our, of our sores and piping in the city of Quincy? And what I was told is we have 100% of the mapping of all of those things, but only 20% of the city is, is that correct? 20% of the city? I think that was what I was told, that we, that we have completed for that, for us, meaning that the, the structure is being sound or not, just like what you were talking about, whether or not we're going to replace something that was probably original to the city, I want to say, when you talk about the culverts that we're just talking about from Central to the Town Brook. But the reality of it is, is that's another big piece that we have to get accomplished as well, separate from this.
Absolutely.
But this piece alone is going to help us create a, you know, a, it's creating a priority mitigation plan, but it's just that, it's a plan, and it could change depending on what happens, that we might need to put something up higher on the list that might be a two, two years out because it might become something that's really important. But most importantly, it's a five-year plan that we're providing to FEMA that will open up, hopefully, opportunities for the city to potentially get out other resources for money for this.
Yeah.
So, I know a lot of work went into this. I did, I did just want to take my moment, because I know that in 2013, you did it, and this is the second time we're going to, well, I know you did, but the city did it. The city did it, and this is our second go-around, and we learn a lot from that, so hopefully we did have a lot of learnings from that. And I know, too, when we talk about storms and different things that are going on in the city, I know even from the time period that we've had some of these storms, the historical data, when we, we go back and look at that, it's, it, in a short period of time, and I think, Ally, you were brand-new at your job, when we had the nor'easter in January and then the following one in, in March, in that short period of time, and it, and this is no fault of the city, it's just Mother Nature in this way, but the weather came in and hit us in that January, and it kind of caught us off-guard. And I know that we had a meeting, I know it was Mr. McCarthy and myself because we were new on the council, and we were getting a lot of information, and I think, Mr. Costello, you were talking about how you were able to go back and look at the maps and recognize some things from the storm, and I believe there was some findings from that because we were better prepared in March when the next storm came in to get people, not necessarily protect the homes for the damage that was done, but potentially get people out of a high-risk area to, to safety faster, because when those roads get shut down, it can be terribly scary for somebody that might be of high risk. So, it's something that we can't prevent when we're talking about something like this when it comes to, to Mother Nature, but it is something that I think we are trying to work better at and more collaboratively with. So, doesn't happen all the time, but.
I just wanted to mention, in a planning, planning for these MVP workshops in April, we were sitting with Lieutenant Gillan and Ally Simon, Seaman, and they are, they saw the maps, we had them laid out on the table, and they're going, we're laminating, and they're going up on the wall. So, they're not, they're extremely happy to have this information to use for, for their planning purposes, and we hope they'll also be able to use that web tool, too, which has all of the mapping and all of the vulnerable community assets, all GIS-based, and anyone can access it, and I'll give you that URL if you would like.
Absolutely. Well, I thank you very much, and like I said, the most important thing that I got of this is I just really hope that we're looking at what's going in development, because we are developing, to me, at a rapid speed. We should probably slow down a little bit at that so we can catch up to all the work that needs to be done, because it's not helping the city if we're always trying to play catch-up. that needs to be done because it's not helping the city if we're always trying to play catch-up. But I understand a lot of the work that's gone into it, so thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Council Mahoney. President Crowell would like to ask a question.
Thank you, Council. Good evening, Gabrielle. I spent some time with, reading this over the weekend, and just my own unsolicited opinion, I think this is the gold standard of reporting. I really do believe that. This is a tremendous body of work, and you can tell that it is, you know, a lot of time and effort put into it. So, you know, that's, that's always helpful. My own experience, kind of growing up in the city, I grew up in a flood zone, the corner of Cross Street and Miller Street. So I'm intimately familiar with, and that's before the pumping station on Furnace Avenue, intimately familiar with what happens when, you know, your, your area, your home is not in a position to be protected. You know, I was, I was pretty young at the time, and I remember that the basement would fill up, and I remember, you know, the fear and the frantic, and the chaos in the household. You know, and to a large extent, right now, being in this seat, I, I kind of wish that, you know, these were conversations that were being tackled back then. I didn't really know sort of the gravity of it because I was pretty young, but you could just tell, you know, in the way that my parents emotionally dealt with it, that, you know, these, you can't anticipate when it's going to happen, but you can certainly plan for it. That's my long way of saying that one statement. So I'm glad that, you know, we're looking at this, you know, 52 projects, five years, somebody must have a, a rough number about what we could be talking about dollars, right? Would think.
We do. I mean, we, we did, we went back and forth between like actually trying to put actual numbers and then just went to, you know, $1 sign to, you know, like really, really pretty broad range.
Like a speedometer.
I, I just honestly, I can't remember what that total was. But it was a lot of money. It was a lot of money. I just have it on a spreadsheet somewhere.
Okay. So again, there's, there's no commitment per se right now. And the way that my mind works, fortunately or unfortunately, is, you know, I just, we talked, what was the word, interconnected, interconnectivity, I think, is what my counselor, my fellow counselor said. I just look at sort of this plan and how it interconnects with all the other, you know, financial measures that we contemplate. But I know things were broke out, you know, this is year one, this is year, between years one and three, between years, you know, two and four, and, you know, three and five, and so on and so forth. There's no financial commitment with this particular plan today. That's correct, right?
Correct. And the table in Chapter Seven, mitigation strategy.
Yep, I read that pretty closely.
You did. And it lays out, you know, all the potential of funding opportunities.
Yep.
And, you know, that's, that is something that the town is having more and more success with, is, is getting grants in EEA, DEM, seawall repair funds, FEMA, Coastal Zone Resiliency I could name more grants that the city has been successful with.
No question.
They all, you, there's a box to put down on there. Has the town done a Hazard Mitigation Plan? Has the town participated in municipal vulnerability preparedness? So you check those boxes and you get bumped up for priority for funding. So the town, the city is, been successful with grants, and I'm sure they're going to continue to pursue those at an even a greater rate going into the future to help offset some of these tremendous costs.
And just obviously listening to your testimony, you know, your, your talk and your presentation, it's, it's clear and evident to me that you've been, you've been doing this for a while. So, and I'm assuming you do this for other cities and towns as well?
We do.
Right. What's a typical, I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it, I'm just trying to connect it in my brain, like what's a typical reimbursement rate? Like when you have a plan like this?
For, in doing a plan?
Just, yeah, just.
Well, this, this was.
If you have a document, it opens you up to opportunity, right?
This was paid for with, with, I believe it was $24,000 from a FEMA grant, and about a 50% match from the city of Quincy. Because they knew that they, that $24,000 wasn't going to get them all of the information and analysis they needed to have the, the strength in a plan that they wanted.
No, again, I think this is a, that's my opening statement. I think this is a fabulous plan.
So, you know, communities do hazard mitigation plans for $20,000, they do it for $120,000.
Right. I guess the question becomes, so, you know, we have a, we have a strong body of work here, we have a clear case as to, you know, the current state of the nation.
Yeah.
How, in your experience, I guess having something like this, does it, will it unlock?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Like a tremendous amount of opportunity?
I mean, absolutely. I, I.
Does FEMA love to see this?
I think you can say Quincy is a poster child for coastal storms in the eyes of FEMA. And I think the money will roll in.
Gotcha.
So, you want, go ahead.
Maybe Joseph Shea again, to add a little color to your question. Mr. President?
Yeah, please.
The, the report that was done three years ago unlocked FEMA funding for the Miller Cross Furnace Ave neighborhood you grew up in.
What is it? I'm sorry.
The, the report that was done three years ago unlocked funding for the Miller Cross Furnace Ave neighborhood pump station. To your specific financial question, that made available to the city $5.3 million of free money.
For that one project?
For that pump station.
Yeah.
That was 75% of the cost. So the city will get about $6.5 million worth of pumping infrastructure in the neighborhood you grew up in, which we know floods badly.
Substantial, yeah, sure.
Of which FEMA, because of the approval of these type of documents, funds 75%. So it's a, it's a, certainly is, that's one of the best deals available driven by these great reports.
And reimbursement rates obviously alter project by project, you know, merit by merit. I mean, I don't, I don't know the intricacies of the back, you know.
They do.
Yeah.
They do. The federal level, 75%, these reports can make you more eligible and a better applicant for state revolving fund loans as well, at some point, sometimes have grant components, sometimes are low-interest loans, but it basically unlocks many of the avenues you have available to you.
And this will sort of avail itself, again, I looked at Section Seven, it shows the targeted breakout over five years, I'm assuming. Joe, you work sort of in conjunction with Time Bond?
Yes, very closely.
Through this process, through this program? The city council, you know, just say hypothetically, year one, the things that are on for year one will be presented to us in some capacity with hopefully reimbursements from other entities?
Always. That, so for, for year one, it's a lot of the very fast-moving projects when you look at the table. However, we always look to try to find some sort of mitigation with federal or state funding for that presentation package. That's one of the challenges with giving a number, is the goal of following this process is to seek funds from the state, from the feds or any other opportunity, so that when we come in with the individual funding package for a specific project X, Y, or Z, you see the breakdown of other people's funds and then the city's contribution.
The goal is to take this plan, get it approved, go meet with whomever to hopefully unlock some money types, and then come to the city council at some point with a more targeted plan on what we're doing.
Correct. That's the goal and the process, yes.
Yep. So year one, and I was just kind of curious because I'm not even sure, the Faxon Park, was it overlook or outreach?
I don't know. Come back to Gabrielle for that.
Faxon Park, that was, that was a fire hazard where neighbors were piling brush in an area, and.
Was that the overlook?
I believe so. I believe so. And I, I don't know each of these projects in great detail, but they, there was a decision made to keep the project, so.
So we don't necessarily know, is it the overlook at Faxon Park? Just like a cul-de-sac, look out and over? It's, it's my district, Gabrielle.
Faxon Park, it was, was it widen and maintain the fire road?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Widen and maintain the fire road? Is that the? Okay, so is, are you looking at the slides? I'm just trying to, I have more detail on the project.
Section seven, it showed, actually, it showed in the slide too. I think it was Faxon Park outreach.
Faxon Park outreach.
You can jump back to the slide deck if you'd like.
Uh.
Actually keyed it, so it would be.
Fire, brush fire.
It's the high priority mitigation.
It is. Conduct outreach to residents about not dumping yard waste in or against the park wall for Faxon Park. And it's, it's, it's a partnership with DCR to complete this. It's, it's work that's in progress, and it was important to the fire department to maintain this project. So it stayed in the plan, it went through the staply evaluation criteria, and it came out as a high priority project, probably because it was easy to implement and had no cost and benefited many people.
Yeah, I could tell you that the Pennsill Neighborhood Association, which is just a local neighborhood group, every year, the city of Quincy does this thing called Cleaner Greener.
Yeah.
It's coming up on May 2nd.
Yep.
And the reason I ask is because I was fifth, May 5th, correction. The Faxon Park overreach, I wasn't sure if it was the Faxon Park overlook, but either way, like literally, we've been back there on Cleaner Greener and pulled like construction debris. Somebody decided they were going to cut out their cellar stairs and in their infinite wisdom, dump them in the middle of Faxon Park.
Oh, my gosh.
So like we've dealt with stuff like that, which is beyond, you know, that's, that's the benchmark for, for, I don't know, I'm just, I reserve my comment.
Well, I'm not sure in the exact location, but maybe that's it.
Not good behavior. So essentially, what you're saying is you want to educate the neighborhood on why they shouldn't?
That is, that is the plan.
Okay. Mr. Shea, I just have one question for you. It's been a while since we touched base on this, but since we're going through this, I figured I would ask, because I think when we last talked, it came down to like funding, which everything does, right? But the Pennsill Drainage Study?
Yes.
Do you remember that?
I do remember.
It's like an Army Corps, yeah, I think you resent me documents. This was something I heard about when I first ran for office a while, while back. And there was a, a report produced by the Army Corps of Engineers, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And it showed that, actually down, and I think that's Council Hughes's district now, Hammond Court issue area, the bottom of Pennsill, that maybe the culvert underneath was causing or aiding to substantial drainage issues. Is that part of this?
That report that you mentioned was a report that was commissioned about 14 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
By the Army Corps of Engineers. It turned out to be about a three-inch-thick document, and it effectively said, for the low, low price of about $25 million, we can fix Pennsill. So it was a, it was a very large, large capital project, as you would expect from the Army Corps.
Twenty-five million, wow.
However, within that document, when you peel it, when you peel it apart, there were a number of smaller projects that have been worked into capital improvement plans or are on future horizons. Some, some work on Kendrick's Ave near, some swale work, for example, that you can get a very high bang for your buck or, or return on your investment. So we did go through those when, in preparation for a number of the recommendations within this framework, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I remember, you know, not for a complete detail, but it being a very, very hefty price tag. And I remember you and your professional approach told me it's, will be very difficult to secure that, you know, allotment of funding.
That individual funding for the one.
And I understand you just kind of, you know, you sort of cherry pick these items as, as funding becomes available. But I guess, said another way, there was some deference paid to that report that obviously impacts the quality of life of people in Pennsill when we kind of put our heads together and looked at this document. Correct?
Yes, and it was, it was included. For example, for Pennsill, DPW staff has a, has routine maintenance activities on some swales and some other pipes within the Pennsill neighborhood, that a capital improvement project can, can help with both the belt and suspenders. They'll continue to monitor and make sure that, that the operation of the pipes is sufficient, but, but the increased capacity of the pipes coming off the hill is a capital project was considered in here. We, because everything in Pennsill list drips into Bigelow, the Bigelow Pool, when you go through the table, it's blended up in the Bigelow Pool line item.
But if I remember correctly, when we approved the DIF funding maybe last time, that infrastructure sewer line maybe that crossed the whole Hancock parking lot was supposed to, in some form or fashion, actually relieve some of the pressure that takes place at the Brook down in the Bigelow Elm Street area. Was that not?
You're right, that's an excellent memory. There's a, there's a separate project with the same name. Sometimes it's called the Spear Street Relief Conduit or the Bigelow Street Relief Conduit. And that's to ensure that water can go directly to the Elm Street Bracket Street area, as opposed to flowing all the way through the Bigelow neighborhood. That's a project that we discuss quite often. It's a project that is, continues to be part of the downtown's plan for redevelopment when we get to the, the R2 component of the Hancock Lot.
So it's still.
It's got the same name, however, it's a slightly different project.
Underway. So I guess, again, as I read this, every ward counselor says, you know, you want to be supportive of the mission as a whole, but like what directly impacts the people that you deal with on a, on a daily basis? So the Pennsill Drainage Study from, you know, a while back sort of triggered my, my mind and prompted the question. But again, it sounds like, well, I know you've read it because we've talked about it quite a few times, sounds like there was some of that thought in that report taken and applied here in some context.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, President Crowell. Councilman Mahoney?
I was telling you, you didn't have to. I just have one quick, I just, out of curiosity, this is a curiosity thing. We were ranked as the fifth highest in 19, from 1979 to 2017 for the repetitive loss. Who were the other communities for the top, that were in the top four?
That's a good question.
We got Situate.
I'm going to have to look it up.
I was just curious. If you could let me know, that would be great.
Boston.
Oh, you found it, there you go.
They're not named, but you know those communities better.
Okay.
So, from, so the ranking is the worst in the red.
Okay.
So there you go. You can just tell us, because I, I don't know all those communities.
I think Plum Island is one of them. It's on the North Shore. Looks like Situate, Marshfield, I don't know. It's, it's definitely the South Shore, so Situate, Marshfield, in that area, yep. I'm missing one, so it will come to me later, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mahoney.
For recognizing the geographic. I wasn't going to get them right.
Thank you, Councilman Mahoney. So we have on the floor, all in favor, the motion, the motion was made, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I just want to thank the group. Nice presentation, lot of information, good, good stuff. And with that, I close, and I close the, and I want to thank the, the council for tonight's committee meeting. It was very productive. Thank you.
I'd like to call back the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk, I believe you have a couple of traffics?
I do have some new traffics.
I do have some new traffics to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward four, add, do not enter on Robert Street, northbound intersecting with Brook Ave from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., and from 12:00 noon to 3:00 p.m. on school days. Add no right turn on Gilbert Street, westbound intersecting with Robert Street from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on school days. Add no right turn on Nightingale Ave, westbound intersecting with Robert Street from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on school days. Add no left turn on Nightingale Ave, eastbound intersecting with Robert Street from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. school days. And add no right turn on Robert Street, southbound intersecting with Nightingale Ave from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on school days.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Those will all be referred to ordinance. Any unfinished business in preceding meeting? Seeing none. Reports of committees, Council Yang, ordinance?
Just a couple of traffics. Thank you. Okay, sorry, just a few moments.
One moment, let me just cue you up. There you are.
Can you hear me now? It's like a Good Verizon commercial in here. All right, so the first is 2019-059, at Handicap Parking at 75 Independence Avenue, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Council Yang, seconded by Counselor Mahoney. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Seven members. Council Harris recorded as a yes. Thank you.
Okay, the next is 2019-060, add no left turn on Hodges Ave intersecting with East Quantum Street from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. school days, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Council Yang, seconded by Counselor Mahoney. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Okay, and we've got 2019-061, add no left turn on East Quantum Street, westbound intersecting with Hodges Ave from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. school days, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Council Yang, seconded by Counselor Mahoney. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members.
Okay, and last one, 2019-062, add no right turn on East Quantum Street, eastbound intersecting with Hodges Ave from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. school days, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Council Yang, seconded by Council Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members.
Okay, and last one, 2019-062, add no right turn on East Quantum Street, eastbound intersecting with Hodges Ave from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. school days, I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Council Yang, seconded by Council Harris. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Council DeBona.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Yang.
Yes.
Council Mahoney.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members. The item is approved. All set, Counselor?
Yes.
Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. I, I have two. Like to take a moment and keep in our thoughts and prayers, the Alexander family, obviously. Ann Alexander works for the City Council and the City Council Office, passing of her mom, Evelyn Fernald. We certainly continue to keep the Alexander family in our prayers. And also, take a moment, and keep in our prayers, the Kenevy family. Liz Kenevy recently passed away. She was a lifelong Quincy resident, graduated North Quincy High School, raised, you know, two boys, and is a lifelong Quincy resident, so certainly keep in our thoughts and prayers in this tough time, the, the Kenevy family. Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, April is Autism Awareness Month, just keep it in mind, and tomorrow is April 2nd, which is Autism Awareness Day, so just keep it in mind with the, the kids and adults that have autism, and to light it up blue this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other petitions, memorials, and remonstrance, motions, orders, and resolutions? Okay, everybody's favorite part of the meeting, scheduling of committee meetings. We will be back in this room Wednesday, April 3rd, for a finance committee meeting on the $61 million downtown incremental financing request. I know Jen, thank you Jen Manning for kind of compiling our schedule over the next month or so and sharing it with the City Council. I believe Counselor Mahoney was going to schedule an education meeting. Counsel Mahoney?
It's on April 18th, if we could schedule an education meeting. Let's say 6:30? 6:30?
Perfect.
All right.
Do we have a quorum? Because there was three councils that weren't available that week, and I think they're all in the committee. It's a vacation week. That's why we moved some of the downtown stuff.
Oh, it's vacation weekend.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I know Council Yang is not available, maybe Council McCarthy and Council Pal, which is not available.
Okay.
That's three.
What's the advertising on that?
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we can work through that offline?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
No worries.
Thank you for your willingness, I appreciate it. So we have obviously a whole lineup, if you will, of downtown meetings throughout the month of April. I had also shared with, you know, one of the chairwomen for, for the ordinance committee that if there was, you know, a need through the City Council, that we could always utilize April 22nd in some form or fashion to continue the deliberations regarding all things downtown, particularly surrounding the Ross Lot. Any other scheduling of meetings outside of that? Council Yang.
Thank you. I just want to, I want to take the opportunity to take one of the amendments we have for regularly council meeting on May 6th.
And schedule a 6:30 ordinance committee meeting to get an update on the two orders we have around marijuana.[1726.66]